Good evening. Good to see you all here. Will you please stand with me to say the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you and welcome, everyone. I'm going to start now with the roll call. I will start by saying that Councilwoman Lavaca did request at a last meeting that he be excused, and the council obliged, so he will not be joining us tonight. So, beginning with Councilwoman Loy.
Here.
Councilwoman Kestie.
Present.
Councilwoman Diamond.
Present.
Councilwoman Henderson.
Here.
Councilwoman Cock.
Present.
Councilwoman Burns.
Present.
All right. Moving on to approval of the agenda, and there is one add, and that is, at the end of the meeting, we're going to have a closed session. It'll be very quick. And, given the weather, I think that's a good thing. So, when you make the motion, please include the closed session. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the closed session addition.
Thank you. About a second. We have a, that was really close. We had a call, a motion by Councilwoman Burns, and seconded by Councilwoman Diamond. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Moving on to the consent agenda, we have items one through five. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. So, we have a motion by Councilwoman Henderson, seconded by Councilwoman Cock. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. Motion carries. Okay, we have a couple presentations tonight. The first is an appreciation for Ariel Wesson's 25 years of service with the Siege of Woolley Fire Department. And Ariel, if you will come forward. Oh, you were hiding back there. I thought, oh my God, is she here? How about that? And we'll just wing it. How's that? So, Ariel, as mayor, and having the opportunity to have worked with you and to hear all the wonderful things that you have done for this department, I want to personally thank you for the time that you have served, and I think it's fantastic that you're still going to be here. You still have so much to offer, and you know, you're just going to continue to grow and no other successes. So, because you've already developed a great success within the fire department. And if I may be so bold, there was a write-up, and not my words, but somebody else's words, but I thought they were amazing. So, I would like to read them if you will have the right to. Okay. It says, "Today, we celebrate and honor Captain Ariel Wesson, who has retired after an incredible 25 years of volunteer service with the Siege of Woolley Fire Department. Captain Wesson first joined the department as a resident volunteer, dedicating herself to learning the job and serving the community. Through years of hard work and leadership, she rose to the rank of captain, becoming a mentor and a role model for many firefighters who have come through the department. When asked about her time with the Siege of Woolley Fire Department, Captain Wesson shared, 'I'm extremely grateful for the last 25 years. I have met some of the best people while serving my community. I will always cherish the time I've spent serving, learning, and growing, shaping me into the person who I am today. I am also thankful for my family, who have been my biggest support, making it possible for me to live my passion and be committed to the fire department and to my community. And although Ariel is retiring from active firefighting, Ariel isn't stepping away. She is completely willing to continue to support the Volunteer Firefighters Association in a new role, ensuring her experience and dedication remain as part of the department for years to come. So, before I give her our plaque, I hope that you will join me in thanking Captain Wesson for her 25 years of service, and wish her the very best in her future endeavors."
I just wanted to add to that. While we celebrate 25 years of service, Ariel has given a lot more than that. She's been a part of this family for 30-plus, because when I started here, she and Karita and Lanny and Miles were part of this family long before, with her mom and Chet being a part of this fire department. So, while you have done all these things that they just talked about, it's been a lot more than that, because she's been the person that always says yes to everything. She steps up, whether it's helping with an auction for burned children, being a part of a work party to raise money for these kids, going to schools for fire prevention, helping our new firefighters and mentoring them, and the leadership that she provides, the peer support, whether it's Sunday night at 1:00 in the morning after a fire or a big event, the things she's done on the side with the community and our members. I love you, kiddo.
You are very kind, and you are very patient, and you are a great leader. And I feel almost envious that we give to you just a simple crystal plaque for all the years that you have served, but we give it with great honor and respect. And it says, "To Captain Ariel Wesson, Siege of Woolley Fire Department 55, in recognition and appreciation for over 25 years of outstanding leadership, dedication, and commitment to providing safety with professional service to the citizens of Siege of Woolley. We extend our gratitude and respect." Okay, moving on then, we have a special guest tonight, and that is, from PUD, George Sado. And he is going to give his, it's an annual presentation that he gives, and it's always a great presentation, to learn about what's happening with PUD, how that's impacting our community, and sometimes how we can get involved. So, thank you, George.
Thank you, Mayor. Can clear our room pretty good, so that, I don't know what I did. We love firefighters, because the PUD provides water, and you know, that's our gift to the fire department. Oh, they've all left, even Chief Wagner's out.
I think they're going to go enjoy cake while the rest of you three.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, good evening, council. I'm happy to be here again. I love coming to the City of Siege of Woolley, providing an update. I'll talk to you about some cool projects that we're working on, and obviously allow some time for questions. And feel free to interrupt if there's anything that I talk about that you have any questions about. This year, put the slides in the packet, so you may have had a chance to look at them already. But, let's get going. Slide one. Woody's in there in the back, right? We can go. There we go. Just like to start off with our commissioners. Same three commissioners, slightly different positions this year. Commissioner Lindquist, District One, ran for election last year. And when a new, when after an election, that commissioner starts at the secretary position, everybody else moves up. So, Commissioner Lindquist is secretary. Commissioner Hamburg, who's here in the audience tonight, is vice president, and Commissioner Miller is now our president. Our commissioners serve six-year terms, so every two years, they're up for election. So, in two years' time, Commissioner Miller will be running for election. Next slide, Woody. I thought I would start off with a summary of, if you've happened to drive by our building on Freeway Drive, just giving you an update on what's going on there. We, that's the site plan of our facility, of our site, actually. The blue buildings are the ones that we've occupied for the last 50 years. And then, just due to growth, growing out of our building, some other issues, we decided to build a new admin building, and that's the orange-yellowish one in the top left-hand corner. And we started this project seven years ago. We started construction two years ago, and we're very nearing completion. That was a rendering of what we thought the building might look like. And if we go to the next slide, Woody, we can show where we're at right now. We're a couple of weeks away from moving in. So, it's our new admin building. Our operations staff are going to stay in our existing building, because that has a warehouse, and a dock, and a mechanic shop, and a lot of things that were too expensive to build in the floodplain, and the admin building was a little bit simpler. So, that's where we are right now, the day and night shots, and the contractor is just completing some minor punch list items, and we should be in in a couple of weeks. What are we doing with the old building? Good question. We are in discussions with the Mount Vernon School District. They are in a very old building, and are looking for some upgraded office space. And so, there's some space that we hopefully can work with them on in occupying. So, we can move on. And I'll talk about a couple of neat projects that demonstrate our innovation in the community. The first one, I've talked about this in previous years, but we do utilize our water rights for the community. And so, what we've done in previous years have, we've transferred some water rights to the irrigators in the summertime, when they haven't been allowed to pump from the Skagit River. So, there are some irrigators who have water rights pumping directly from the river, but they are subject to the in-stream flow rule. So, when the river drops, they cannot pump. Typically, the river drops in the summer months when the farmers need that water. So, previous years, when there's been droughts declared, we've done transfers, but those droughts are becoming more frequent. And so, last year was our first year where we just said, regardless of what's going on with the drought, or the state declaring a drought, or anything, we're just going to set up transfers, and we're going to make the water available. So, if the river drops, it's available for you. Because, just because there's not a drought declared in the state, doesn't mean that the irrigators don't need water in Skagit County. So, we set that up last year. It worked reasonably well, and we're going to do it again this year. And that, those are just some headlines from when we did it last year. But if we go to the next slide, Woody, this is just a, it's kind of hard to see that map, but it's down on For Island. There's two districts, Districts 15 and 22. The triangles are the diversion points where they pump water out of the river. So, our pumping location is just on the South Skagit Highway, our big pump station. And what we are doing is basically deferring our pumping. So, we're saying, there's one pump we're not going to turn on during the period of May 15th to October 1st. That water stays in the river, goes downstream, and they can pump it out at those locations. One district, I think, uses it to fill their ditches, and they sub-irrigate with the ditches, and they pump out of them as well. And I think 15 just has a major pump station there, the blue one. So, it's worked successfully. They're able to use it as a backstop for when the river drops and they can't pump, but they have to have an existing surface diversion already onsite, permitted by ecology. We've worked with these districts now. We know that all of this works, and we're hoping it'll be successful again this year. In addition to these two districts, we are also, there's also one other irrigator, Skagit Valley Farm, who's just here locally. We work with Tony Wisdom, and he's also able to use it. He's downstream of our pump station, so he can also utilize this as well.
Just a quick question. I was wondering about this when I was going through the slides earlier, but the yellow triangles that you have on there, is that where the pump stations are at? Or what, is that an indication of?
Those are their existing points of withdrawal from the river. Yes. So, 22 has, I think, seven points of withdrawal, and 15 has just one. And so, when we transfer, they, we want to limit where they're pumping from, so we limit it to one or two, if they, if they choose. So, that's, it's up to them where they want to pump from when they're using our water rights.
Okay. So, they can put it where they need it most?
Where they need it most, yeah. And where is most efficient and economical for them.
All right, thank you.
So, this is something for the community. It's worked great. The irrigators really appreciate it. We're still piloting this program, and it may expand in the future, depending on needs, and if we can continue to make it work. We have to change our operations a little bit to make this work, so we also have to be in the right position every year. So, that's a really neat project. We're continuing that again this year. And the second thing I wanted to talk about, if we go to the next slide, Woody, using our water for power generation. And so, these are also some headlines from our first microhydrogeneration project, which was at our facility on Division Street in Mount Vernon. So, at that site, we were reducing pressure. So, the water came from Judy Reservoir. It would flow into our tank at Division Street, but we'd have to reduce the pressure, because the elevation's a lot lower. So, we'd reduce the pressure before the water went in. There's a way to reduce the pressure through a microturban and generate power at the same time. So, we were able to, we installed this one in 22, 2022, and we are able to generate power. We have a net metering agreement with PSE. So, we generate power, put it back into the grid, and then our power needs at that site are offset. So, it saves us about $1,200 a month on our power needs. So, small project, but it works well for us. It's able to, you know, offset our power needs. So, then, we thought, okay, what else can we do? So, the next slide is the project we are currently working on. The tank in the top-left of that photo is the Ninth and Highland Tank, right by the Mount Vernon High School. So, same thing, it's, we use a pressure-reducing valve to reduce pressure at that location. So, that's also a potential site where we can generate power. We don't have a power demand at that location, though. So, what we did, and this is PSE's rules around this, if we generate power, it can be used by somebody that borders us. And so, being a public agency, we have inter-local agreement with the Mount Vernon School District. They're our immediate neighbor, so we can generate power. It'll offset whatever small needs we have, but the other remainder of that power can be used by the school district. They have 14 meters onsite, and it's able to offset some of their needs as well. So, this is going on right now, actually. If you were to drive on Highland Street in Mount Vernon, you'll see them putting in the vault. And I think later, later this week, they'll put in the microhydrogeneration unit. The good thing is, or there's a lot of good things about this, just like the first project, there's a lot of funding involved, so we're not having, in this one specifically, we're hoping to not have to contribute any funding. There's federal funding involved. There are some state grants that are involved, and so, we should come out of this, you know, not having to contribute anything. There will be some vehicle charging stations that will be installed at the high school that cars can use, and then just offsetting the school district's costs, which are always a good, good thing to do. And as you can see, there's about $26,000 in yearly savings, so that'll benefit them as well. If we go to the next slide, these are just some of the, this is a summary, so they have 14 meters. It'll offset some of their demand. You know, we, we're in construction now. There shouldn't be any disruption to the, to the school. They're really happy about this arrangement as well. Who wouldn't be, right? And then, the next slide just shows our funding that we're getting from different places. We're a little worried that maybe some of the federal funding may not come through, or that tax credit that's shown on the bottom line. We've inquired about it, and we think we're going to get going and get it done fast enough where we'll still be able to get that, so. But we've also had the vendor step up and say, well, if there's some funding that you can't get that goes away, the vendor was also willing to contribute to it, just to make sure the project goes through.
George, real quick, is PSE contributing to that at all through any of the savings? Like, when we redo our lights to LED and stuff like that, we'll get rebates. Are they rebating you at all, or covering any of the project costs?
That's a good question. On the first project at Division Street, they did contribute funding. That was a straight net metering agreement, and they contributed. I can't remember exactly how much, but they, they did add to that. On this one, they, we ended up with enough funding, and they, they didn't end up doing that.
Thank you.
That net metering agreement, I think it's set up where they do offer some power to some other customers at a lower rate. I think there's something in there. I'm not remembering exactly, but because we can net meter back into it, it allows them to offer a discount to some, to certain customers if they qualify. So, I think that's another way they're contributing.
Thank you.
Okay. So, those are the two big things I wanted to talk about. I'll briefly touch on the last slide, but I'll pause here in case there's any other questions.
I had a question. Thank you for the interesting presentation and the innovative projects. I guess I have two questions that you might be getting to it. One is, with the use of water downriver for, you know, growth, whatever, how, how confident can the residents of Siege of Woolley be, especially during a drought, that they'll have adequate water supplies?
I didn't bring a slide showing our overall system, but in the case of a drought, we have contingencies built into our system. So, our, our water supplies come from snowpack, snowmelt, and rainfall from the Cultus Mountains that feeds into Judy Reservoir. We also are allowed to pump from the Skagit River. And so, unlike the farmers, the farmers have water rights on the river, but they get interrupted when the river drops. Our water rights are senior to that. And so, we, we curtail a little bit when there's a drought and the river drops, but we still get most of our water rights to be able to pump from the river in the summer. We're a municipal water purveyor, so having those senior water rights are important, and they were set up that way so that we wouldn't be impacted when the drought happens. So, water supply is not really a big issue, you know? And even if you take it a step further, Judy Reservoir, we try and top it up in the spring, and when it's topped up, there's about five months of water supply in there, even if we didn't add another drop. So, it provides a lot of reliability and resiliency in case something were to come up.
Okay. And the second question I had is, do you have like a long-term plan that you've developed, or the commissioners have developed on rates, so people can have some predictability about how much their water rates will go up?
That's a great question. That is a conversation we're planning to have this year. The last time we talked in-depth about rates was in 2019. We did a financial cost of service analysis, a capital program review, and we kind of bundled it all up together, and we developed a five-year rate plan. So, this year, or last year was the end of that rate plan. This year, we plan to talk about it, so we're hoping to come out of this discussions this summer and fall with a plan for the next three to five years.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. It's heavily dependent on our capital program and expenses. Just like any piece of infrastructure the city owns, you know, we've got aging infrastructure, and we've got to replace it and maintain it. So, we've got to balance all of those costs with the rates. There's a lot of rate pressure on customers, not just from us, from PSE, from Cascade. You know, we, we fully understand that, and those are conversations that we, that we're planning to have this summer.
I did. I did. Thanks, George. On the pressure recovery valve generator system, is there anywhere within Siege of Woolley, within our delivery system here, that we could incorporate something like that to give some kind of savings or offset of costs of operating, like our wastewater plant, or getting us any energy? Is there anywhere we could put that to help our city out, to cut our costs?
Yeah, that's a good question, too. When we did an analysis of all the places in our system where we have pressure-reducing valves that we could generate power, there were a couple of sites in Siege of Woolley where that happens. There's two specific locations. The challenge is, and I briefly mentioned this earlier, with PSE rules, if you generate power on that site, you can wheel it to an immediate neighbor. And so, in both of those locations, there aren't public agencies nearby. And so, we've talked to PSE about this, because it doesn't, it seems unfair, and it's not efficient. We should be able to just generate power and wheel it even just back into the system so that somewhere else, like the city, could pull it out. We would need some change in legislation to do that. We have support for that. It's just a matter of getting it together and pushing it. So, at the current time, it's just private ownership around our sites, so that doesn't work. But if we can change the net metering rules in the, in the state, then we'd be able to do something like this. Yeah. And then, just this last slide, these are a couple of projects we're working on. It's near here. It's at our treatment plant, so I thought you'd be interested. The one on the left is a picture of the chlorine gas cylinders we use up at our water treatment plant. And there's quite a few of them. And their chlorine gas is not fun. It's not something you want to be around if you can help it. Our plant started small, and we didn't have to put a lot of chlorine gas onsite, but with our system growing over the, over the last 30 years, we've had to store a lot of it. So, one project is to reduce the amount of chlorine gas we keep up at the water treatment plant. It's better for our operators. It's better for the community. Chlorine gas is dangerous. It flows down, it runs downhill. So, any kind of chlorine gas leak would be bad. So, we're going to work on our disinfection system and reduce the amount of gas that's kept up at the water treatment plant. And then, the one on the right, as I mentioned, our treatment plant's 35 years old, and so, that's the generator that it came with, and it's time for replacement. So, we're investing some money up in our water treatment plant to ensure that it lasts another 35 years and beyond. So.
Is that a diesel generator?
Yes.
And is that what you're planning on sticking with again?
Yeah.
Okay. I wasn't sure what was convenient, if you could do natural gas, because of the location, or?
Nothing's convenient up at our water treatment plant. The power supply, the gas supply, it's, it's a challenge all the way around. And so, yeah, we're, we're going to stick with that. That one's undersized. It can't run everything that we have up there, so we need to increase the size of it. But yeah, diesel is still the preference.
Size is problematic, I get it. I've worked on ones the size of a semi-trailer. And I understand, sticking with that, it'd be nice if you could do natural gas, but at the same time, you can store diesel for a long time.
Yeah, right.
I understand. Thank you.
We do cycle them. You know, we, we test them and make sure the generator runs all the time, get through the diesel so it doesn't stay on there. But yeah, it's, gas is a challenge up there. Yeah.
George, I just want to thank you and PUD for the great partnership that you always provide outside of our area, but still impacts us. This is Centennial Trail, being able to expand that because of the pipeline that was ran from your reservoir, Judy Reservoir, into Mount Vernon, when you had to change out the pipes. But also for the baseball field down near Riverfront Park. It is well-used and well-loved by the community, and it was owned for several years by PUD, although I don't know many people knew that. And just about two, three years ago, you signed it over, PUD signed it over to the city, and we still love it, and are still making great use of it.
Yeah. Thanks, Aaron Berg.
Yeah, yeah. And speaking of which, I know, you know, that new building, we were Yeah, yeah, and speaking of which, I know, you know, that new building, we were trying to get you all over here, where the Star Center is at right now, that's where we were hoping you would build, but didn't quite.
As I said, it, it took a while to make the decision to get to construction, and we looked at a lot of different sites. We looked at Seadrill Woolley, South Mount Vernon, we looked up at the port. It's always easiest to build on your own site, utilities are already there. We own the land, so yeah, it was, we definitely thought it through, but yeah, that's where we ended up.
And then just one last question, just kind of an update, I know you shared this the last time, I think I asked the same question the last time that you were here, but having to have to do with the, with the pipes that run from Judy Reservoir across the Skagit River coming this way. There was talk at one time of replacing those, what's happening with those?
We, we did some condition analysis on the transmission line from Judy Reservoir into Seadrill Woolley. The biggest thing we were concerned about is joint separation in that pipe. It's a concrete cylinder pipe, segmented pipe, and it's got joints, and we're worried about leakage. You know, how much of that water is getting out, and what, what condition is it? Just through some operational testing over the last couple of years, we found that that pipe has, it holds pressure very well. We were okay on capacity for now, like at some point in the future, that may be an issue. We're okay for at least the next 20 years. The condition, as far as we can tell, is, is good, it's holding pressure. So we pushed that out in our capital plan. We originally had it as the next big project, but we pulled up the water treatment plant projects and pushed that project out, because we think that, that pipe is still doing really well. The sandy soil helps a lot. The pipe in Mount Vernon is bedded a lot in glacial till with a lot of native backfill, and it created issues. But this pipe is doing pretty well.
All right, thank you.
Just a quick follow-up on that, would be the structural integrity of it, leaking where you could line it? What would be the reason if you did end up replacing it?
Capacity is always a big thing, because we can do spot repairs. Like if we got a leak, we could go in and fix that, and, and we'd be good. So it would have to leak enough to where it would be an issue, and then capacity we would address, too. So we'd have to balance both of those decisions, but, but it's a very expensive project. So yeah, we'd have to really be certain that that was the best use of the money.
Okay, so looking more like capacity will be the reason.
That'd be a big reason for it, yeah.
Thank you.
Councilman Loy.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna throw you a curveball, I got a little comment to make.
All right.
I'm president of the Umpires Association for 13 school districts, and for years and years and years, you've allowed us to use your meeting room for our training in the spring. And for at least 10 years, I'm gonna, I'm meant to say thank you, and I haven't done it. So I'd like to say thank you to you, and I, I forget that she's on the PUD, and I could say thank you, but it's, it's a great service, because you, you can't find any place for a nonprofit to meet. So you guys give us a key on Sunday, and we lock it back up, and it's very appreciated. And 13 school districts, thank you.
There is a lot of nonprofits that use our meeting space, just like that, and yeah, it's great, we're proud of that fact. The new building has a really nice, even a better meeting space than our last one, and the same rules apply. If it's a nonprofit, we'll allow people to use it for free.
And, and the young lady's real easy to get along with, so.
That always helps, yeah. Shannon's great.
So anyway, thank you.
Thank you for that comment.
All right, if there's something else, George, thank you very much for coming in, greatly appreciate it, always appreciate the updates, and, and again, we appreciate the partnership.
Thank you.
Also want to thank you, PUD Commissioner Corinne Hamburg, for coming in tonight, it's always good to see you. You're welcome anytime you want to come to the meetings, so good to see you.
Thank you for your time.
Yep, safe journey home, I hope the weather holds before, yeah.
Thanks.
All right, thank you. Okay, moving on to administrative report, so Charlie.
Yeah, just one item this evening, for council, we have created a GoldenEye Best part of our website. It's in the community tab, we'll be advertising it and promoting it a little bit more on social media tomorrow. But essentially, this page on our website has more information on how to weigh into the process for the public, provides a general summary of the project, provides links to the GoldenEye Best project page on FSCEC, the main FSCEC page as well, and then has all the opposition letters that we've, many that we've received so far, and a few more that we're hoping to add, but the ones that we've sent, as well as a link to our moratorium, and Skagit County's resolution in opposition to the GoldenEye Best project as well. So just wanted to make council aware of that, and I'll put it in the weekly update tomorrow as well, I'll give you a link to that, so you can share that as, as you see fit. And with that, that's all I have this evening.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to Councilman Loy.
I just wanted to let everybody know, we're starting to get ready to activate our skateboard competition, so I've kind of done some work ahead of time, but in April, we're gonna get serious about it, so. It's coming back, which I think this is probably be the seventh year.
That's fantastic, that's fantastic. Thank you for starting that up and keeping it going. I know it had a few years where it was down, but you came back and brought it back, so thank you. Councilwoman Kestie.
She doesn't have a voice tonight. So on behalf of Councilmember Kestie, she wanted me to let everybody know that the Seadrill Woolley Museum is hosting mug shots and mocktails tomorrow night from 4:00 to 6:00, where you can show up and enjoy an evening of complimentary headshots, mocktails, and appetizers. So if you need an update for your business profile pic, or a headshot of any sort, you're welcome to come by. If you don't want to do that, just stop by and, and get to know some people from your museum, learn a little bit about the history, and socialize, so. That'll be from 4:00 to 6:00 tomorrow night. I also wanted to, is that it?
Go ahead.
No, no, you're good, okay. I'll move on to mine, then. I wanted to let everybody know that the Seadrill Woolley High School Fast Pitch Team is putting on a free softball clinic for all Seadrill Woolley Little League softball players, and that is going to be on April 2nd from 5:00 to 6:30 at Janice Field. And again, it's free if you're registered under Seadrill Woolley Little League. It is free and being hosted and taught by the high school fast pitch team and their coaches, available for the community there. And then I also wanted to take a moment to recognize Ariel. She's done an amazing job in her 25 years here, and if you haven't had a chance to get to know her as a person outside of just the, the things that she has done for the fire department, she really is a stand-up member of our community, and I encourage you to, to stop by and say hi to her at any time, because she, she really truly is a, a pleasure to know, and her years of service will not be unnoticed in, in her absence in, in serving directly on the department, but she's still going to be involved. And so if, if she's around, you get a chance to speak with her, please do, because she, she's fantastic, and the city's very lucky to have had her around. And with that, that's all I have.
That's very kind. Councilman Henderson.
Thank you, Mayor. Coming up in mid-April, Lager Rodeo is gonna be putting on an event, a fundraiser again for 4th of July fireworks. That'll be at the Seadrill Woolley Eagles, and it'll be a silent auction and spaghetti feed, and there'll be more info on that to come on my next report, next meeting, thanks.
You all are doing great work, by the way, lots of support to, for different service groups, yes, what's fantastic. Councilman Cock.
Yes, I would just like to highlight a story I saw in the Skagit Valley Herald, that there was good news on completing in the Northern State Recreation Area, the Song Sparrow Bridge, that's a nice name, connecting two trails there, and kudos to the Skagit Trail Builder, the volunteers helping with that, the county, and a contractor. So there's continuing good work up there.
Fantastic, thank you. Councilman Burns.
Want to thank Ariel for her dedication to our community. I went to the Colchon Hotel grand opening last week, it's great to see another business open here, especially another hotel, help get more tourists coming through in the summertime, people to stop for the, the Big League and other events. And also, the Seadrill Woolley Lions Club is doing the log drive again this year, and I got notification earlier today, the tickets are finally in the mail, so you'll see those going up for sale really soon.
That's awesome.
That's a fundraiser for childhood cancer treatment and Camp Corey, which is a Lions Club camp in Mount Vernon that is for kids who have medical issues and their families to, to be kids.
How much money did you raise last year, because it seemed like you guys ran out of tickets, I think you did really well.
We did run out of tickets, I'd have to go back and look. I'm gonna say it was three or 4,000, and this year, we're doing sponsorships to try to increase that number. Each year, we do a little bit more.
Nice.
Get the word out.
Thank you for the great work.
Thank you.
Extend that to the club, please.
I will.
Thank you. So just a couple of things, first off, I sent, handed out to you the 2024 Annual Report for Family Promise of Skagit Valley. They wanted you to see that, and I think it's a great report, it's the first time that they've ever put this together. And because you have been such faithful supporters of them, and also, and you show that with the funding that you have provided them, they more than welcome you to give them a call, or come for a tour, or anything, anything else that you would like to know about Family Promise. Also, I think I just, I do with it, I also want to mention the, what did I do with it, I set it down, here it is. As you, I sent it out, this out to you earlier, and that's the power outages that are likely to happen this evening because of the strong thunderstorms that are rolling in along with the wind. You know, showers and isolated thunderstorms are gonna continue through tomorrow, along with the winds. They say it could be up to 30 to 45 miles per hour, so rain coming through the weekend, but that's okay, you know, as long as it's not the thunderstorms and the wind, but just everybody keep safe, and you know, make sure that you have your flashlights and whatever else that you may need to stay safe within the storm. So, all right. With that, we are going to move on to our, we, we do not have any old business tonight, any unfinished business. So we are going to move on to the one and only new item that we have under new business, and that is the amending the Seadrill Woolley Municipal Code, Chapter 12.36, the City Parks, Recreation Vehicles, Facilities, and Community Center. This is ordinance number 209525, and this is a first read. And Kelly.
Mayor, public comment.
Oh, did I bypass the public comment? I did. Okay, well, we'll back up just a bit, then, and it is 6:40, and is there anyone here for public comment? If so, please state your name and how you're affiliated maybe with the city, and then try to keep it within three minutes. Any public comment? Okay. Hearing none, I will close public comment, and thank you, Charlie. And my apologies on that oversight, and we will move on to new business, as I've already stated it. So Kelly, I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This item is revising this municipal code regarding parks and facility reservations. This came about with our transition to a new online system for reservations, and just addressing some administrative items related to, related to the code. So the new system is up and running. A big part of why we wanted to switch to a new system was integrated payments, that no one had to wait for an invoice from the city, and then go on to a separate site to pay that invoice. It should all be integrated within one, one system now. Couple things to know about, about our reservation system, there's two types of reservations. The first one just involves no staff approval, so it's, it's less work for us. These are the picnic shelters that are available. If, if no one, if they're not already reserved, they're available. We block off some dates, but it doesn't require any city approval, so those items, individuals who want to make a reservation, pay immediately, and they have the reservation. The second type of reservation requires staff approval. This includes our athletic fields, the large shelter at Riverfront Park, which also can include the amphitheater and the community center. These ones require the individual wishing to reserve to put in the request online, and then we review those to ensure it meets all of our, all of our requirements for those, those types of events, so that we can talk to them if any insurance needs are required. We also make sure, like with the athletic fields, you know, we have commitments with some sports, sports groups. We don't want anyone to book, book one week in the middle of T-ball season, or, or Little League in any way. So those require, require approval. We have in the code outlined when they need to pay, so we've kind of just cleaned that up a little bit. We are requiring for those that they pay 90 days before the date of their reservation. Makes it really easy for us to go in, look three months in advance. If someone hasn't paid, we contact them, and if they still don't pay, we remove their reservation. Someone else can come in and, and pay for that. Also refining that you can get a refund if you cancel within 60 days, or before 60 days, if you're in a shorter period, you do not receive a refund for those items. And outlining that if you're making a reservation within, within the 90 days, you have five days from the date to pay. These really just help us streamline the process, make it simple rules that we can easily follow for our reservations. I did want to note one thing that came, came to my attention. Nathan pointed this out, that in our municipal code, we don't have reference to the Olmsted Park shelters. So if council would like to have a second read of this, we can bring that to a second read, but if you'd like to pass it tonight, that would just need to be added, added in. Basically, the same language as the other items in here, that the Olmsted shelters are reserved if you pay a fee, and the fee is based on the master fee schedule.
I would love to see that.
Yeah, we're just trying to think ahead, so we don't have to revise the municipal code again when those shelters are up and going.
Go ahead, Councilman Henderson.
Would we have to amend the master fee schedule in tandem with that, because, or is it just the same rental fee across the board for picnic shelters?
The master fee schedule does delineate different fee schedules, but we don't have, we can update the, the code, and then later update the master fee schedule as, as needed. So there isn't currently any shelters up there to reserve, so next time, and we will be bringing the master fee schedule back to council, we can add those before they're, before they're open to the public.
Thank you.
Anyone else? What is council's pleasure?
So what did you suggest, Kelly, if we added Olmsted? Do we wait until second reading?
We, you could add it tonight, just adding language into the municipal code to add the Olmsted picnic shelters. I did, I, I missed one, one item in here, is in our code, we provide a discount for community groups, but we don't provide a great definition of what a community group is. So we propose changing that to a charitable nonprofit organization. That organization would fill out a simple form, just checking, basically stating, certifying like, yes, we meet these three requirements and signing, and the city would hold that on record. And we have the ability in the new system to flag those groups, so that they are eligible to receive that rate, instead of them having to, to call in, that unless we hear otherwise, that group applies. So I forgot to add that piece of what we'd like to change. I just forgot to verbally.
Oh.
About to say the same thing, I'm like, no, no, it's right here.
I'd like to make a motion to approve this with the addition of Olmsted Park shelters.
I'll second.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilman Cock, and seconded by Councilman Henderson, to approve ordinance 209525, amending the Seadrill Woolley Municipal Code, Chapter 12.36, City Parks, Recreational Vehicle Facilities, and Community Center, which will also include Olmsted Park shelters. Would that be adequate, Kelly? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Can I add a quick question, since I'm relatively new to council?
Can I, can I finish the call?
Oh, sure, sorry.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, motion carries, go ahead, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I jumped ahead. Since I'm relatively new to council, the, do we charge for the RV spaces at River? Since I'm relatively new to council, the, do we charge for the RV spaces at Riverfront?
We do.
Okay, so is that on the same kind of reservation system that?
Yeah, and I don't have, it, I don't think I have it perfectly memorized, but I think there's 27 spots down there, and 17 are available for reservation, and 10 are first come, first served, although if, if no one has a reservation, then a spot is first come, first served at a kiosk there.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Sorry, Mayor.
Oh, no worries. And I thought, well, let's, let's just finish this first before we move on. So that concludes our meeting. If you had a chance to check over the informational, it's always great to do, so I would encourage you to do that if you haven't done that yet. And I want to remind everybody that our next meeting, actually, is just next week. It's April 2nd, can you believe that? We're going to be in April. Am I saying, by reading that correctly, or is it two weeks away? Somebody help me out here, it's next week, isn't it? I mean, this month has just flown, okay? So our next meeting will be April 2nd. So with that, I'm going to adjourn and remind the council that we have a very quick meeting, it's a closed-session meeting, and we'll meet in the lunchroom. Thank you.